Because it currently would produce about seventy-five gallons a minute. So, at one point four, we'll need to take well eight or well nine out of that item. Purification, we do have included in their preliminary design for a, an upgrade to the water treatment facility. So, you know, the, the Water Development Committee met last night. I think we'll go over their recommendations, or I should say A two S's recommendations with backup or recommendations from the Water Development Committee as well. But really, we need to get moving on the water treatment plant in some fashion. So, my thought process is do preliminary design, design in two thousand twenty, start construction hopefully sometime in two thousand twenty-one with the new plant going online no later than two thousand twenty-three. So, that's my thoughts, anyway.
Is that the same site?
Yep, same site. We're just gonna expand the existing plant. You know, we've talked off and on, do we want a different location or have a new, have two plants running? It's always more efficient to have one facility. So...
If we do that, will we like take that public or plan it?
Yep. Yep. You know, so at some point in time, that, that very north softball field that's just south of the treatment plant is going to go away because we will probably expand into at least a portion of it. If you look at the current plan, you know, we need to double the capacity of the plant. So, take that footprint, double it, excluding the, the underground storage tank on the north side of the plant. And if we want to look at adding a chlorine storage or chlorine contact room, it's gonna be a little bit more than double the existing size. Filter press, etc. But those are all designed...
Construction will come along.
That's when I would like to start.
Do we need to take that off? Or do we have to do it like just for you tell me how to act and pass it now?
Well, we're...
We're living next to a rock.
No, no. It, it...
Designable.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. So, that's about as fast as it goes. I think, you know, talking to the folks at HDR, they did, they did Yankton's plant. That took five years from start to finish for when they finally pulled the trigger on it to, that we're gonna build a new plant from start to finish and when it went on the line and produce some water.
And we're just adding on already?
Yep.
So, we're corporateing by?
Well, I mean, there's, there's some pretty significant questions that the council's gonna have to figure out on the way to designing this plant. You know, what do we want to incorporate in the plant? Do we want, you know, one of the conversations last night at the development committee meeting was RO, reverse osmosis. I think the development committee says, let's plan for it, but let's not do it in this plant upgrade. So, you know, do we make that? Do we make those connections, so to speak? And we build the, the building to include an RO but not put the RO system in? And then the whole question of where do we put the WRT process if we're gonna use that? So, there's, there's a lot of decisions the council's gonna have to make in the next year during this design. So, that's in there.
Do you have that number for design?
Yep, we got, we got it off of a report. I'll have to look.
Percentage, take percentage.
It's a, it's a percentage of the estimated cost.
Estimated cost.
Is what I took. I took eight percent of the costs that A two S had for a plant. So, that's where I got it. Thank you. The next big one is the meter changeout program. We talked about that a couple of months ago. A number of our meters are starting to reach the end of their useful life. So, we would like to change out, this is about a four-year changeout program if I remember right. Three, three or four-year changeout program that we're talking here for this cost. And that cost includes the price of the meter and the cost for the company to change it out. So, they would handle all of the scheduling. They would do the work, you know, when it's convenient for residents during the day, during the evening, during the weekends. Something that, it'd be a heck of a lot better than us doing it. So, I think that the total cost is about eh, four hundred bucks a meter roughly, including the changeout. And then we've got in there nine point eight million for the two towers. You know, that's still open for discussion.
Nine hundred water meters you can't get done in a year, next year?
Mm-hmm.
Total of twenty-seven hundred.
They were, they were pretty confident on that place there. Well, we've got, I think, actually thirty, three hundred.
Got thirty-three hundred meters, but some of them are newer.
And some of them are new, some of them are bigger meters that don't have to have, don't have to have replaced that sort of like businesses and stuff. So, they were pretty confident they could do a value of one year.
Yep. So, that's planning. Then after we get everything new, then we need to put it together for the next meter changeout in ten years or fifteen roughly. Yep.
When are we gonna decide what we're gonna have those towers?
This fall.
Do you?
We've got, we've got the total cost in the budget. If we decide to do one tower instead of two, it's really, it'll just have that cost. So, it's, at this, at this point in time, it's better to have both towers in. We also show it on the revenue side as, as a loan to pay for those. So, it would just be modify, it's easier to modify the budget down than it is up. So... But we'll hopefully get that decision made or recommendation in front of the council yet this fall.
In the next month or so.
Yeah.
How long ago?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months? That's for both of them.
Yeah, so I'm gonna take that one.
Is it?
Thirty-two or thirty-four.
Okay. So...
Have they both started or just one?
They're both decided.
And the reason we're thinking of taking one of those sidelines?
Um, water age for one. I'm a little bit concerned that our water quality might go down.
Explain what that is. What, what's water age?
Water age, so we have our whole system, water's in that system, and then people start using them. Well, in the west side, we only have one line all the way out to the Falls. So, when we have water all the way out there, there's only a small percentage of the population using that water. And so, that water, we want that to, to kind of replace every three to seven days. I think seven days is about the max on free chlorine, our current system. And there's been a few concerns about that tower not stabilizing, so then we'd have eighty-day plus water, the water quality will go down. And that's using the towers that have capacity. So, the only thing that we'd be doing there then is emptying the water tower every other week or something, which doesn't make sense when we're trying to push our water conservation.
So, if we don't, if we don't build the two towers, we, we just retain our booster stations and move the water that way. We'd build the one on the east side. So...
So, we're, we're not just initially going ahead and paper design and all of that? I mean, will we, will we advise incorrectly? Because it seems like this could have stopped a lot of those expenses from...
Well, yes and no. I don't think we had a very good water model at the time. Now, we have a really good model in DGR, and we calibrated it and everything else. So, we're able to do those analysis, but before we didn't. We had WaterCAD model, which is more of a two-D type of system. And this is more of a static system or more of a dynamic system. So, so we more information now than what we had when they started the design.
Will we still get rid of one water tower?
No, we'd, we'd retain the existing water tower until the second water tower's replaced at some point in the future, or the second water tower's built at some point in the future.
Okay.
Well, well, that's true. That'll have to be modeled.
Elevation?
Yeah.
Perfect portion of water on top of the wall.
So...
We have lots. We have a tip play at the bottom.
Administration, we've got the water conservation budget in there with about fifteen thousand dollars for the rebate program. The other six in there for promotional materials. Request of purchasing two pickups, is that two half tons, three-quarter tons?
Okay, right.
And then once again, transfers out about twenty-six thousand, two fifty for the engineer's salary. And then the, the balance of that ninety-eight three thou, or ninety-eight thousand, three hundred is for the water department's share of the bonds that we are issuing this year to pay for the projects. Electrical fund, that is our streetlight system. We set those at five dollars per household. Is that a year, two years ago now? Two years, we're not proposing any changes there. We're building up a little bit of a reserve, but it is currently cash flowing. Then we get into the sewer fund. Under professional services on page thirty-eight, we've got Bethany Sewer Main Design. Somebody like to explain what that is? Is that the air relief?
No, it would be that mine going for the new school and part eighty acres.
Okay.
The new development.
So, that's design on that TB and J property?
We got it, that's gonna be high bar or we got that...
Is that design or is that construction? Design? Okay.
The school district, sorry. Okay, I know it's something out there. Does the city have to be prepared?
Does the city have to be prepared for that when we do it? I mean, it's not tomorrow that we're gonna do it, but it's getting, coming up on us pretty quick.
And the city committed to, or at least in theory with TB and J to install that line? And then we will do what's called cost recoveries. So, as the land that, that, that line services comes into the city limits, we will recoup our costs for installation.
So, is that something too, this is kind of going, we were talking about, so will that be developed out there, right? Because now it's just a big cornfield.
Yep.
Right? So, then, so we get the sewer, make sure that's all ready, because you know when the school district does pull the trigger and say, we're gonna, the school's going up in two years, housing market, people are gonna wanna build around there. So, then that would allow those builders to get in there and be able to start.
Yep.
Right?
Correct.
Do we have a plan that we're, that was not here. Do we have a plan where the trail's gonna go and all that good stuff, too?
Yeah, we've got it, we've got it. The trail will pretty much follow the sewer line, which follows the creek.
Okay.
Because that's the low point. And we've, we've looked at that trail in the past. We need to get access to the sanitary sewer line anyway for cleaning. So, if we can kill two birds with one stone...
Because we need to just do a nice road that we could drive on, right?
Yep, build a trail so that we can get the jetter truck on it and other vehicles on it up to Redwood eventually.
Yeah.
Is where we'd like to put it. Water, we already have water down Redwood and Chestnut, so they would have access to that when that eighty acres is developed. We just need to get sewer to it. Some debt service on our projects, the, the lift station and bio solids. Utilities to the Sioux Falls treatment, that's where we're gonna pay them next year to treat our wastewater. Oh, there's the golf course lift. We're anticipating the SDC charges at forty homes. That, you know, the hundred and eighty-five, if you take forty homes times twenty-three ninety-one, it's more, it's less than the one eighty-five. But there are some businesses or connections that do come in with larger meters. And if you remember that SDC charge, twenty-three ninety-one is based on a three-quarter inch or less water meter. So, if somebody comes in for a one-inch or a two-inch water meter, it is more than the twenty-three ninety-one. So, that's, that's the difference there. The golf course lift, is that the air relief valve? Yes. So, we've talked for quite some time. We do have...
Let me stop you there, Brian. Just for, I don't wanna speak for Vicki, but I, I was, took me a while to figure that whole concept out on that SDC charge. So, just quickly, for the board's review and for Vicki's sake, tell them what we do on that SDC charge.
Sure. The SDC charge, it's a system development charge that Sioux Falls charges us for every new connection to our wastewater system. And it's based upon the size of the meter. So, like I said, for a normal residential house with a three-quarter inch or less meter is two thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars. Now, we split that cost between the city, the developer, and the builder. So, it started out three years ago, I think, that each of us assumed a third of that cost. We're slowly over time transferring that cost, reducing the city's cost and then splitting that cost. Eventually, it's gonna, the developer and the builder will, will pay a hundred percent of the cost, fifty percent each. But that is based upon the size of the meter. So, the larger the meter you have, the theory is that the more wastewater you're going to generate, and therefore, the SDC charge increases with the size of the meter. I'm thinking if it's a six-inch meter, it's, what is it? It's a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for a six-inch water meter.
So, it's a total like two thousand dollars?
Yep, it's twenty-three ninety-one for a house.
So, it's like almost, I mean, we just built, we just bought it a month, whatever, four years ago. Really, when you think about buying a home, the builder could almost accrue it and just kind of, don't, don't they just kind of put it back part of their self-credit?
Well, it is, and that's, that's why we're doing it this way.
And it is somewhat of an incentive on the part of the city, Vicki, is, is what have to try to get people to build out here. And that, that's...
Oh, so that's why you kind of started it?
It is, it's a couple of different ways. That, and then it also gives the builders and developers time to put that cost into their pricing.
Okay.
So, they know what's coming. When, when we talked about it three years ago, they all kind of went, we didn't build that into the price of lots. We're gonna have to, it was twenty-three, at least one of them told us, if it's twenty-three hundred bucks, I'm gonna have to increase the price of my lot five thousand dollars. Whoa, 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 wait a minute here. So, this gives them both time, it gives them a little incentive to build now as well as it gives them some time to build that into their pricing.
I just think it's a very, very good program that the council and administration implemented at the time as, as a little bit of incentive on the part of the city. It's a small investment for a long-term re...
And our initial, our initial share of that was based on cost estimates for sales tax. On a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, X amount of that was gonna be building materials, which is taxable, and we would recoup that and offset the, our share. So, and that's just a flow-through.
Program's under criticized, but I will stand up in front of anybody and everybody saying it's a good, good program.
So, it's a flow-through. We don't, we don't increase the cost that Sioux Falls charges us. So, we keep track and report to them every year. February, I think, is when we get the bill for them.
Thank you.
Golf course lift. We currently have a force main that runs from, correct me if I'm wrong, from Bethany Meadows to the manhole at AIDS in Aspen. We don't use it. The Bethany lift pumps everything down to the golf course lift station by hole number And from time to time, if you notice, if you're playing golf, there may be some odor around number nine green.
Not bad.
Not bad.
Not bad?
Yeah. If it's hot and humid and there's no wind. So, we would like to be able to pump directly from the Bethany lift, or Bethany lift station to the manhole up here bypassing the golf course lift station. Thus, hopefully, reducing the odor at the golf course. But in order to do that, we have to install an air relief valve somewhere in the line. So, that's what that cost is.
Is that, what's taking up right now? What are you guys taking up with that?
A diver, water from Palmer Circle to Chestnut.
Oh, for chestnut?
No.
No, it's ready and done.
Yeah, it's in the ditch from, from Palmer Circle to Chestnut. We're connecting the water main loop. Yeah, it kind of looks like a war zone now, doesn't it?
Yeah. My other question, and you guys have, I know we have to do that wall thing for, aren't we losing some of our, our golf course because of the erosion, right? So, if you do that, and it's, clearly, I bet you kill me, divers will, he's riding this bike on Aspen today, coming at all these cars, we're going to buy them out of the valley. Is there ever a way that we can tie in some kind of structure? Can we build a walk path? Is that feasible?
It, it is. We've got some renovations to do on the ditch by the golf course prior to construction of a trail.
Do we have that, hold on, do we have that road or another county road?
It's county road from the bridge, well, from, from the bridge east, it's a county road.
You see what I'm saying? We have no parents of them. I was just like, oh.
Eventually, it's gonna be ours, and eventually, we will upgrade it to an urban standard with curb and storm sewer.
And like a nice little separate bike?
Yep. We've, we've, we've got some issues. We actually had a grant ten years ago now to construct a trail from Chestnut to McCarty Park.
Okay.
On the north side of Aspen. We had a six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to do that. The problem is, we'd have to fill in the ditch, which means we'd have to construct storm sewer, and we would have sewer and water pipes that were thirty-plus feet deep. So, if we had to fix them, there'd be some major issues. So, in order to do that, and then we'd have, that, that didn't include the bridge over the, the Split Rock Creek. That was as much as the grant. And so, it's about a one-point-two-million-plus project. That was, the six-hundred-thousand was just the city's share, which was about twenty percent. Anyway, or eighty percent of the state's share. So, it was about a one-point-five, one-point-eight-million-dollar project. In order to get that project to go, we've gotta do some storm sewer improvements in that ditch on the north side of Holly, or Aspen, which would probably include, if we're gonna do it right, would include some type of detention facility on the south side of Aspen. So, we'd have to buy, I think, this was about three to five acres, so that we can push all that water into a detention pond, kind of still following that same channel through that field. And then we can start addressing the drainage in the ditch and installing some type of trail on the north side.
Okay, so when people come ask me, and they go, why don't they have that? It's easy as just...
Yeah.
With the, with the steepness of that hill, with a, with a designated bike trail, do you have to switchbacks?
Yep.
And so, that's gonna take additional...
Unless it's gonna go right behind the curb. If we put it right behind the curb, then it can follow the greater roadway.
Yeah. So, the original plan from ten years ago is we're just gonna build it, we're gonna fill in the ditch, we're gonna put three thirty-six-inch storm sewer pipes in the ditch, fill in the ditch, and then put a bike trail straight down the hill. That was, that was the plan. Doesn't comply with ADA, causes issues with three thirty-six-inch tubes, which aren't cheap. And then once again, the, the, the tubes would actually be placed over the sewer and water lines. So, not only would they be thirty-plus feet deep, we'd have to be digging through storm sewer pipes to get to them if we had to repair them.
Also, not for the...
No, no. So, eventually, we would...
Always comes up.
We would love to do something with that ditch.
Yeah, if we're gonna do like a bang study for the golf course, I'm like, oh, do we have the same guys, fellas? Could we possibly put in footing and do some added...
Yeah, no. We would love to do something with the ditch. It's, it's, well, at the time those improvements were made, eh, two thousand and five or so, roughly, when golf, where country club drainage was done, it was the cheapest option chosen by the city. Instead of doing what we should have done, the developer, since they were having to pay most of the cost, convinced the city, let's just do the cheap option. So, we did. Lift station rehab, we try to do rehab as many lift stations as we can a year. You wanna explain what that is?
A lot of times, the lift stations that we have are thirty years old or older, so I've been replacing the cabinets in them. If there's some generator, there are some lift stations that need a standby generator here. Those will come cheaply, they're usually anywhere from forty to sixty grand. So, I haven't done anything yet this year with our budget, but that kind of comes throughout the fall when we start doing most of our work in the strict projects, all of us. We probably will have to do some rehab work on the golf courses. But also, because the concrete is starting to wear, we can pull a hole outside of the concrete, so...
Well, then I can reduce the one-point-three-million we're spending at Sioux Falls for treatment.
Then you have to tell Zane he doesn't need water, so...
See? It's a win-win-win.
It's a win-win, I like that word.
So, basically, the control panels, if we need to put new pumps and stuff in, that all gets done, they usually get painted, etc. So, moving on to the golf course, golf course maintenance, in the yellow there, we've got forty-five thousand dollars. We're looking at possibly doing two studies, one for the wall just north of the clubhouse. That is, well, it's not starting to lean. It is leaning. It's been leaning for a while. So, we really need to make a decision on what we're going to do with that in the near future. Geotech did some review of that four, five years ago. They installed some monitoring holes to see what's moving and how much it's moving. The good news is, the clubhouse itself is not moving. The, it's the cart path north that is moving due to bad compaction, I guess, when the cart path was put in, and the, the wall itself isn't anchored as much as it should be. So, we need to just take a look at that. And then we've got another thirty thousand in there, I think, for bank stabilization. We've talked about the damage that was caused by the two recent floods. It started out that we were just looking at hole number twelve, but now, you know, we've got to extend that down, down to ten?
Oh, yeah, ten, eleven.
Ten, eleven, and twelve, and thirteen, maybe?
Hold, hold your button, it's the one that's getting most, uh, road, I don't know.
So, that would take a look at what we need to do. If we do move forward with a project like that, it's certainly gonna require permitting from the Corps of Engineers, which is always fun.
It's a Topeka Shiner?
Yep, we got a Topeka Shiner in there that nobody's ever seen. I shouldn't have said that. And then if we do move forward with a project, that would be done during the winter time. So, it wouldn't interfere with the golf course because they'll be driving heavy trucks loaded with riprap, I'm assuming, across the course to be placed. So, Tammy's thinking that she might be able to do the work on the wall.
Yeah. For the most part, those walls are like a monster block, and you can just send out a performance bin, and then they have their own engineers that kind of design it. So, I don't think we need to hire consultants to do that work.
So, we might be able to take a look at that a little bit. And then Tammy and I have taken a look. We need to, sometime in the near future, we might, we need to do something with the parking lot. You know, we've got at least two, probably three places where the erosion in the parking lot is getting, it's a pain in the butt, so we have to fix that on a regular basis. It's kind of in the, in the driveway, it's about middle of the way from the, about a third of the way from the driveway to country club. And then there's a, a parking space that's coned off west of the driveway where there's some erosion that's undercut the asphalt. And then at the very southwest corner of the parking lot, there's some heavy drainage there that's been repaired a number of times. So, we need, we need to figure out drainage on the parking lot, and then driving over it, yeah, it needs, it needs repair. So, what Tammy and I have talked about is we would, if we can, we would like to maybe use that as a showcase for the low-impact zero-scaping stuff. That would make a great example, kind of along the south edge of that parking lot, where the, before it gets into the ditch, we could look at bio swales or, I hate to go previous pavement, but something along that lines that we could use as a showcase. When we're talking about this stuff, we can show people, hey, this is what we did out at the golf course. If you wanna go take a look at it, this is what we're talking about. So...
And this is probably a two, three-year type?
I would, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's a ways off before we start, a couple of years.
Yeah, we've, you know, we've got, we've got some things at the golf course that we need to take care of. You know, like I said, the, the bank stabilization and the wall, and the wall are probably the two highest priorities. We can't afford to lose six feet a year on hole number eleven or twelve.
Well, I guess the one thing I guess with the wall itself is that it's...
Yeah.
We stayed alive, all curves on, for the golf course.
Yep. So, we need to, we need to take a look at that. Geotech, in our conversations with, they won't come out and say it's not gonna fall down. They don't think it's gonna catastrophically fail, so it'll all just, at once. It'll slough off the top blocks, so it'll just kind of, it'll be a slow... So it'll just kinda, it'll be a slow disintegration.
Or a bottoming.
Yes.
But it is time that we do something.
Yep.
We've kind of been putting it off.
We've been putting it off. So, you know, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, as far as timing goes, if we can do this preliminary work at the permits from the Corps, um, in two thousand and twenty, the construction would take place in two thousand and twenty-one, which just happens to be the time that we retire the bond. That'll be our last bond payment on the clubhouse. So we would finance these improvements with another loan. 'Cause they're gonna, they're gonna be big. They're, you know, I don't think it's, I don't think those are gonna be cheap improvements. You know, the the wall, three to five hundred, maybe, and bank stabilization's probably.
I will say one thing about that wall though, when we talk about, you make that wider. Everything stays right there. That is gonna be the absolute.
So we can take a look at that when you design, instead of having, what is it, two carts wide? Cart and a half, maybe?
We have some, we have to stay the first halfway down the cartway.
Yeah. So we can improve that, we can move, re-improve flow of the carts. But they aren't gonna be, that's not, those are two expensive projects. When we did bank stabilization on thirteen?
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
That was seventy-five, I think it was around seventy, seventy-five thousand bucks. So.
This one might be a little tougher.
Yep.
They did that on the other side of the river.
Correct. So there's, we're talking probably three times as much space that we need to stabilize, and it's gonna be a little more complex than.
Hopefully, we'll continue on this train where we got six floods every year.
Don't count on it.
Six floods a year.
You've been saying that for the last three years.
Yep.
They keep coming.
I know.
Uh, Pro Shop. Major things there. Major thing there is health and life insurance, since we brought, um, Andrew on full-time. That's the big change from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. Lounge. No major, no major things there. It's, uh, we just took the, basically, the four-year numbers. Community room. Uh, we've had that on the the, um, budget for a while. We've talked about that, that we need to replace the dance floor, since it's twenty years old. They're close to it. Yeah, so it's, it's, it'll be nineteen years old, so the dance floor needs to be replaced. And then debt service out there, we've got the lease on the tractor and the air fire loan. And we've got the the bond principal, nineteenth of twenty years, yay. Um, and then we've got that lease purchase equipment. Uh, it'll be the last year for that. Uh, mowers, uh, what else did we buy with that, or lease with that? I think it was all mowers. So. You know, on page forty-four, it it summarizes all of the, all of the requested expenditures by department. Revenue funds gets into some of the five hundred accounts with construction, possible construction. Page forty-six, um, you know, currently, profit and loss for the golf course. There's a summary of payroll.
I don't want to.
Oh, you don't? Oh, okay, never mind then.
They don't have it, yeah, 'cause I.
It's not.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm I'm on the, I'm on the website, or the.
Yeah.
On the computer. It's in the computer. So anyway, what we do now, um, you know, we went over all of the the requested, I'll explain the columns a little bit. The requested is, is what's been requested by staff. So as we move forward, the next step is to make any changes to the requested column, and we'll put those numbers in the reviewed columns. So at this point in time, this is where I ask the council if you have any suggestions, or you wanna see some numbers changed, up or down. We can start factoring those in. This is, this is the time when Christine and I get together and we start looking at those numbers and going, okay, we've got, you know, one point four million to cut out of the general fund, and we're gonna start looking at places where we can cut. I'd love to say minimal impact, but there's always an impact. So. Speak up for now, forever. Hold your peace.
I'm not saying for next year, or I'm not saying for this, this budget to be the following year. I was thinking more and more of this budget meeting, this is my new one, I mean, this is the first time I've ever been like this. But I just remember the first meeting, Mayor bring a good point up, basically, our rescue comes from property, right? So I have to get to thinking, I'm like, okay, people buying homes, building homes in our community, and I know we don't have a lot of sales tax. I think we're kinda changing. I don't know, a lot of people argue saying we're a veteran community, but I feel like a lot of people are trying to make this not so much that way, but it is. So we just, we don't have the sales tax, basically, right? It is property taxes. But if I'm moving from Sioux Falls, which I did eight years ago, you look at.
And we appreciate it.
You, yeah, good, lucky you, right? But you look at those, like, quality of life, like I understand, you know, the golf course, the pool, the trail system, and so stuff like that. I'm not saying next year, but even the following year. Could we ever increase, like, the parks a little bit more one year to kind of give a few amenities? 'Cause to me, I feel like if you, if you're deciding between T or Hartford or Harrisburg, and you wanna move out of Sioux Falls, or it's not in the Sioux Falls or that Sioux Falls, don't you think you look at those things, like, are we sending them to buy a home? And then, of course, school districts and stuff like that, like, if you have kids.
Qual- quality of life issues are always, are are becoming more of a priority for the younger generation.
Yeah.
You know, they 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 look more at parks and and trails and stuff than my folks did, or or even I do, as to where they're going to live. Um, so quality of life issues are are important. You know, unfortunately, where we're at, we've got major infrastructure upgrades.
That has to come first, not agreed with that. So I was saying down the road.
Yep.
It's something we could look at more.
One of the exercises that we're gonna do with the council, after we get the budget done, we're not gonna do it now, but from September through the end of the year, I've already forewarned staff, we're going to actually put together a five-year CIP plan. And that includes projects that we have to do, uh, and and equipment. So we're gonna have two separate five-year plans here. One for capital projects, and others for pickups and squad cars and stuff. So typically, what happens is the staff puts together a list of stuff that that we think should be done. And and we'll, we'll put those in a priority order. Uh, we bring those to council and say, here's what we think need to be done. Do you wanna add anything? Do you have any questions? Explain the process or the projects. Is there anything you want taken out? You want anything added? Um, and then, we kinda leave it up to the council, say, you need to prioritize which projects you wanna do in what order. And then we, as staff, take a look at and go, okay, we've got a pool of X amount of money. So we can plug these pro, plug these projects in in these years, based upon our current or projected cash flows. So we'll actually have a document, and hopefully, by the end of the year, that will say, here's our plan.
Yeah.
And there's, there's a couple of reasons for that. We've, you know, it's been pretty easy to do the capital improvement planning around here, 'cause we've, we've got some pretty prior, big priority projects that are smacking us in the face. And I hate to pick on the parks, parks committee, because Barb's not here, but they're, they're very good. They, they had a plan a couple of years ago. They wanna do, you know, kinda started doing improvements in each park, thus the surfacing project. Well, they, they have kind of a bad habit of, whenever somebody comes to a park committee meeting and says, hey, I'd like this in a park, they kinda go, okay. Well, if we have a plan, we can say, if you wanna do that, we either put it in year six, or if you wanna move it up to another year, what project are you gonna push down the road? So it gives us a tool to communicate with the public that, yes, we do have a plan, that we're moving forward with this stuff. And oh, by the way, if you wanna change it, we need to, we'll need to look at where the, the the project's gonna be delayed. So that's coming down the road this fall. So be prepared. You know, we, we, we worked on one a while ago, as Bob, when Bob Brunick was still in the council, and and after about two hours of meetings, he looks at me, goes, when do we get to do the fun stuff? 'Cause even then, we were talking about sewer, water, and streets.
Well, we need them, right?
Yep, yep. Uh, anything? Any, any comments, suggestions from the council?
Where's our, where's our balance sheet at, and how are we sitting?
The general fund in particular, or?
No, just comparing our income and expenses. Is there a year of balance, or are we short?
We're short. In the general fund, uh, round number's about one point four million that we're gonna have to, to find. Um, and that's, you know, that's not uncommon. I don't think we've ever had a year where we didn't have to cut between one and two million in requests.
But how much did you move over last year?
I, I, boy, I can't remember. So I'm not, I'm not too worked up about the one point four. You know, the golf course, like we talked about, we're looking at, you know, a four hundred-plus-thousand-dollar transfer, which just probably isn't gonna happen. So we really need to take a hard look at those numbers, um, both revenue and expenditure side. Uh, water. Once the budget's done, again, you know, we usually look at utility rates in the fall. Um, so Tammy and I just talked yesterday, last night. We haven't in the past, but we would like to retain, uh, a consulting firm. Our recommendation at this point in time would be A two S to do a rate study for us. Because we've talked about, at least for the last year, of implementing a new tiered rate system for water. So the more you use.
The more you pay.
The more you pay. Um, and that's a little above our heads, so we'd like some, it's cover your ass with anything else. We'd like some professional opinions on how to do that and and what it should be. So we'll take a look at those this fall. You know, we looked at sewer rates last fall. We're still planning the fifteen percent increase based upon current projects in the books now. So that's also coming down the road in this fall, is sewer rates and water rates. We'll take a look at those. So the current, the current water rates in particular don't reflect any new tiered system. You know, if we went to a tiered system, even if we kept our base rate the same, we're gonna generate more money. 'Cause it's gonna be more expensive for those that that use more water in the summer. I don't know what those are right at the moment. So, I think we'll have an increase in revenue with the water department. Sewer, we've already got the fifteen percent programmed in. Anything else I need to touch on? What? Stormwater utility, um, that, that drainage study should be done this fall yet? Okay, early next year? Early next year. And then that's one of the things that we'll probably really take a hard look at for next year, is developing and implementing a stormwater utility fee for two thousand and twenty-one's budget. So, as we look at the storm sewer costs, that we've got, you know, if you, if you remember, just in this year's budget, we're looking at two hundred-plus-thousand in stormwater costs, if I remember right. Probably more than that.
This one's so far, but that's gonna come down.
Yeah, it's gonna come down. But that's a financing mechanism that we don't have to use general fund dollars to pay for storm sewer improvements. It's just that it's a utility like everything else. So it's a new revenue source for us. Um, we will make the modification to the, uh, street maintenance fee. We'll bump that up to the two dollars, which should give us uh, six sixty roughly in revenue, which would fund all of the stuff that we have proposed, uh, for next year, and and give us a little bit of, I think it was about a fifty thousand dollar difference. It's not bad to, to accumulate some money in that account from time to time, is if we have to do a larger microseal project or street repairs that we that we have more than normal. Just so we don't let that get too crazy. The council will need to think about the pool improvements for next year. You know, we've got in the budget for the pool, the design for the, the pool improvements, splash pad, whatever we wanna call it. But right now, we're kind of marching towards a splash pad, zero, zero-depth entry kiddie pool in one, and then, and then some, some newer slides. The question that we're gonna have is, do we wanna move at a faster pace for those improvements? Right now, we're kind of operating on design in two thousand and twenty. Construction just take place, um, fall of two thousand and twenty-one, with those pool renovations being open to the public in two thousand and twenty-two. We could, uh, we'll need to take a look at some financing.
I've communicated to the administration that this chair wants to see that, uh, accelerated.
So we'd be looking at construction in two thousand and twenty.
Try to get that pushed up if at all possible. So.
I have one suggestion. I know they have designs laid out. I do feel for those moms, 'cause I, I moved here with a one-year-old in one household. And so for many years, I utilized that three-size kiddie pool, and I know, and I went back to Brookings just a couple of weekends ago, to their pool. They kept that same kiddie pool. Basically, they don't really make a whole bunch of, just mazes on it, right? But they keep it free. They don't even staff a lifeguard. They have, everyone's saying, you, you know, parents, watch your children. Obviously, like, whoever's close by, but it's not staffed, but it keeps it free for those parents, like moms' little ones. And if we could move on back that way, 'cause I know there was talk about take, take.
We, we have to make some major renovations to the kiddie pool anyway. We've got a pipe underground that's leaking someplace.
I don't think we need to get into the monk.
And we don't know where it's at. Yeah.
That's the reason why I moved into the pool improvements, is 'cause there's major repairs that need to be done to the kiddie pool, and so I just.
So other than that, there's, there's some, um, projects listed in here that will modify down. Uh, one is the transportation plan. I think it's budgeted in there at eight hundred thousand, but that's for all of the improvements over the next couple of years. If I remember. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're just looking at costs, instead of eight hundred thousand for next year, a hundred and twenty-five-ish. So, there'll be a reduction there in the expenditure. There's also gonna be a reduction in the revenue side, 'cause eighty percent of that was, was it eighty percent grant? Fifty, fifty-six percent was grant. So there'll be a reduction in revenue as well, but that's a pretty big expenditure that's gonna be reduced right off the bat.
Rather than flying around here, our next step is, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, is you guys take it.
Yep.
And do what you need to do to get that, and we'll look at revision two in.
Well, uh, I don't have a calendar. Um, we can do it Monday night. Yeah, probably not Monday night. That might be a little soon. But probably sometime next week, we can have another budget work session. Uh, we'll probably have at least two more between now and the first meeting in September. So.
We have briefing on Thursday?
Yep. So, yeah, it won't be after briefing. It'll be the next week. Yep.
And so when we get to that point, you can tell us then to, uh, like, how much we have reserves, general, how much we usually need to carry.
Yep.
To, to let us know if we can take any from that.
Correct. We'll, we'll give you the fund balances as to what we are in general fund, water, sewer, golf course, all that stuff. And say, okay, if, if you want spending at this level, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to take some out of reserves here to pay for this. And that's fine if it's a one-time capital project. You, you don't wanna use reserves for ongoing operations.
But typically, a city keeps reserves up to thirty percent?
We try to keep, well, we're, we're well above that. Our target from now on is gonna be six months, fifty percent of the, the expenditures. So, we do have reserves, uh, in both the water and the general fund that exceed that number right at the moment. So. There you go. So if there's any projects that, that it's, there's no, you, you have to do those, and we can't find other funding sources, we'll take a look at reserves to do that. So there you go. Fifty minutes.
Thank you.
One thing, uh, we do have a press, um, briefing tomorrow at two for here, for the water quality reports.
We'll have a Facebook, or we can.
Possibly.
If we can figure it out.
Yeah, it's cool, but I would love to watch it.
So we've, we've, uh, extended invitations to, uh, the three, three TV stations, the Journal, Argus Leader. Uh, we, we sent them out the notice. Um, we put it out on Facebook, texted lead.
Yeah, texted lead's causing us right now, but.
Facebook, right, but we did do that live tomorrow, I think that would be.
Yep. So. Um, Mark Mayer from D E N R has indicated he will be here. We'll ask him to make some comments. The gentleman from Midcontinent Lab is unable to make it or unwilling to make it, but I sent him a statement that he said he would, send me something, I'll sign it. So I should receive that tomorrow. And we're ready to go.
Very good.
You're all invited. Two o'clock here. So, that's it? Sounds good.